Mr. Warden, we are good to go.
Well, good morning, everyone and county council staff and the viewing public. I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's November 26, 2020. And looking at the window here, it looks like a very nice day to see the snow disappear. So again, Christmas is coming and for all those out there, it's a festival season. So do your part in a safe way that we can and and return to those that are, I guess, maybe shut in and need that a little bit of a cheer. So we have an agenda for county council that's been published. Madam Clerk, with regards to the roll call.
We have all members of county council present, Mr. Warden.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So then we do have a published agenda with county councils. Is there any declaration of interest? Okay, if one does arise, you can declare at that time. Moving forward, we do have the adoption of the minutes of November 12th, and that's been moved by Council Patterson and Council Burley. Are there any errors or omissions or anything to discuss in those sets of minutes?
Mr. Warden?
Council whoever, go ahead.
Yes, in the committee of the whole minutes, we're being asked to adopt the resolution on CW 204-20, which is the correspondence from the City of Owensound Countywide Waste Management Program. And since the last meeting, when we voted on that, I was under the impression we were under one collaborative framework. And since then, and I want to thank Heather and Kim for sending me the revised one. Apparently, the first one we were sent was earlier version. And then there was a subsequent staff report, CAOR.gov 0313, which was actually the one that was adopted. And it, I guess, we adopted or we put forth that staff would bring a report. And we're under the assumption that two municipalities needed to ask for it. But and then also in the report, it says that the following initialization steps are required, which is a written request with substantiating information. And I'd just like to get some clarity on what that substantiating information is required, that is required is, and if we have received that on this issue. Because, you know, I don't want to start off on this issue by deviating from the protocol that we've adopted at stage one. So I would like to have the CAO's comments on that.
Okay, thank you for that. Madam CEO, do you have a comment or go back to the clerk as well? Madam CEO? I don't see it. See, it's CEO. So maybe I'll go to the.
You're on mute, Kim.
No, don't go on mute.
There we go. Thanks, sorry. So this was just brought to my attention. And as councils aware, this collaborative framework, you know, predates myself here at the county. I'm not aware that there's a specific and detailed definition of what substantiating information would look like. My intent with bringing the report in January was really to talk about the information that I was able to uncover with regard to what the county would be looking at as far as gathering information necessary to be able to assess this question in a substantive way. So I'm afraid I can't shed a lot of light on that as far as if there were specific criteria that needed to be met beyond the request for the county to look at a particular matter. And that request coming from more than more than one individual municipality.
That's how I remember it also, Madam CEO, is that I think it was two or more raised the issue. And then it's sort of triggered it into that process. Counselors, whoever, do you have a follow up on that?
Oh, yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, we are following the framework that is in place. Because, you know, it's quite detailed, actually. If you read that staff report, which Heather was kind enough to forward to me. And, you know, there are requirements and there are various stages where, you know, if, you know, a process can be stopped as well. So I would, the other thing is, I wouldn't want to go too far down the road and then realize we've passed one of those decision points. And there's been a lot of work done by staff when, you know, the decision point had come to a point where, you know, the process had to be terminated under the existing protocol. So I just wanted to highlight that fact that, you know, we should follow what we have adopted and, you know, make sure that we don't go and do a lot of extra work to find out we're going down the wrong path. That was my only concern.
Follow up to that, Madam CEO or Madam Clerk? So I guess, I guess procedurally, do we need to provide some clarity in this process? Does that need to come back for process clarity?
If I may, Mr. Warden, what I suggest is that when I bring back my report in January, I will speak to the various milestones or criteria that are in the collaborative framework and, you know, put that together with what, as I say, what my research tells me as far as the kind of work that the county would need to undertake in order to have sufficient information to make a decision. So when it comes back, we'll lay that out.
Very good. And so, Councils, whatsoever, any follow up to that then?
No, no, that's exactly what I was looking for. You know, you know, have that clarity because there seemed to be initially, of course, the CEO wasn't here when it was passed. And, you know, you had to really dig down into the records of the committee and to find out exactly what was recommended and what council endorsed. So it's, it's not an easy process. So I think, you know, I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Okay, and I, I know one of the items that did go through the process was countywide libraries. And I don't know, Madam CEO, if you wanted to go back and check some of the minutes, how that process went through. I think that was sort of the big one that sort of came along through after that framework was put in place. So I don't know if that's, if that adds any assistance or guidance, but I know we did go through that process after that framework was put in place.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem. So following up then, so thanks for that, Councils, whoever. Is there any, any other discussion on the minutes of November 12th? Hearing none? Anybody opposed to those minutes? Okay, those are carried. Thanks, Madam CEO, for that. So moving forward with the minutes of the Long Term Care Committee of Management dated November 10th. Those minutes were moved by Council Burley, seconded by Council Mackey. Are there any errors or omissions or any discussion on those sets of minutes? Right, hearing none? Anybody opposed to those sets of minutes? Hearing none, that those were carried. All right, so moving on to the set of minutes for the adoption of the CAO Evaluation Minutes. It's moved by Council Desai, seconded by Councilor Mellon. Any discussion on those sets of minutes? Anybody opposed to those minutes? Hearing none, those were carried. All right, and then we have the adoption of the committee of the whole and CEO closed minutes. And that's been moved by Council Desai and Councilor Hicks. Is there, I guess, if there's any discussion, we need to go in camera on those. So in the general discussion, hearing none, anybody opposed? Okay, those are carried. Okay, moving on then, there are no closed meeting matters on this agenda. So then going to the bylaw, bylaw 50, 50, 098-20 and 50, 099-20 moved by Council Woodbury and Council Keveney. I don't know if any of those bylaws wish to be pulled separately. Don't hear of any, so that's moved again by Woodbury and Council Keveney. Any discussion on those bylaws? All right, hearing none? Anybody opposed to those bylaws? Okay, those were carried. All right, I know this is always the most charming part of our meeting and it's good news and celebrations. So I'm going to mix it up. I'm going to go reverse to what I've done in the past. So I'm going to start off with Wes Gray and Council Robinson. Good morning.
Well, good morning, Mr. Warden, and good morning, county councillors. I have two points I wish to mention to you under the heading of good news. Wes Gray will be hosting a festive lights tour beginning December 1st all the way through to January 4th. There will be various spots in West Gray in all of our communities where you'll be able to see different lights. And I just, using all the health protocols and being safe, it would be very, very nice if you were able to attend that. Also, the West Gray Police Service is conducting once again the Toy and Food Drive, which is already taking place from November 25th to December 17th. So thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you very much for that, Council Robinson. And Council Hutcherson, do you have anything to add?
Morning, Mr. Warden and County Council. Just a couple of things I just want to mention that we did get all our Christmas lights up and all our communities wrote West Gray. Elmwood did, they launched it. They were ahead of the, ahead of everyone else, but they had a big tree lighting last Sunday and it was all the protocols in place and was well received. It was a good turnout for that. One other thing I want to mention is the Sawgy Municipal Airport. We're working on getting the snowbirds to come and do a flyby for next summer. So stay tuned for those updates. It'll be quite an event for that shared airport. Thank you.
Well, thanks for that. Yeah, keep us informed of that. That's pretty exciting to have the snowbirds. I know they were doing a bit of a flyby. I'm going to say, was that April this year? They were flying by a few communities with regards to COVID, so that'll be exciting. Thank you for that. Moving on then to the town of Blue Mountains, Councils, whoever.
Had to unmute there. Everything's moving forward here as we get ready for the Christmas season. We have planned a holiday drive-through community dinner, much like our lobster fest and Oktoberfest. So that'll be, we're estimating 500 turkey dinners drive-through at the arena. We're also doing a Blue Mountain holiday video experience. So all the various local entertainers, church choirs, there's going to be some of the ministers are going to do a little Christmas sermon as part of that celebration. And then there'll be videos featuring businesses and other events around town. So that'll be playing over the holiday season on our town website and the Explore Blue website. So that gives the businesses a chance to promote themselves and also promote the town and, and the various groups within the town. We also have the Clarksburg Village Association is doing a light tour. And so you can sign up and there's interesting things. We also are running a shop local contest with various prizes. So if you shop in some of our local businesses, make sure you enter. You can win vouchers for, you know, a night at the village, local restaurants, all kinds of things. Some of the prizes are actually pretty attractive. They are vouchers, so they can be used for a long period of time. So we're not encouraging too many visitors, you know. And if you don't want to get out and dine now, you can always use your voucher later. So a lot of initiatives going forward and I'm sure I've forgotten some. So maybe Mayor Potter remembers the ones I've forgotten.
Well, thank you, Council whoever. Council Potter?
Thank you. Yes, just a couple of things, and that is some light displays. Blue Mountain has, has a lot going on, Blue Mountain Village with light display and sounds. And it's a nice scroll through the village. Thornbury and Clarksburg will be getting theirs underway very soon. So lots of places to visit in the Blue Mountains and we're gearing up for the holiday season.
Okay, thanks, Council Potter. And I understand if you ski at Blue Mountains, you have to pre-book or buy your ticket ahead of time or something.
Yes, that's right. And that's right. And Mr. Mayor, I was just going to mention that our mask bylaw, which requires customers as well as businesses, makes them responsible for wearing a mask. So that went through council last night, or went through committee of the whole last night. So it is on the way. So people should be aware that, that that is coming if you're in the Blue Mountains. So.
Okay. Thank you for that. Good stuff. So moving on to the sunny south, South Gate, Mayor Woodbury, welcome.
Good morning, everyone. We have the Optimus Club out near Holstein is, is doing a turkey dinner tonight. Great response. It's been sold out for a little while. So we have that going on. A, at this point, we're still trying to do a stationary parade for Christmas and we'll, we'll see as everything changes how that goes. It's not good news, but we lost our old fire chief, John Thompson. Yeah, he died in the line of duty with brain cancer. And we lost him last week. And so the, the town came out, the, or the township came out in support of his family in, in droves. So really proud of the township. And Brian knows more.
Please pass our condolences from the county for that. Okay, thank you for that, Council Woodbury. Council Mellon?
I can't say that I know more. I probably know different stuff, but I don't know more. No, I think John has covered it all very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mellon. All right, so moving on then to the city of Owensound. Mayor Body, Council Body.
There are not much to report. Really, there's a lot going on in planning and that type of stuff, but nothing we can re sort of publicize yet. Festival of Northern Lights is on, of course, along the river and down in the harbor. I do note, before we come back to council next time, county council on December 6th is the 31st anniversary of the Montreal massacre when 14 young women were murdered for being women. And I know we'll have a presentation at council Monday night, but something we can all think about. That's all for me.
Thank you, Mayor Body, for raising that. That's an important anniversary to remember for sure. Okay, Council Leary, do you have anything to add?
Morning, Mr. Warden, County Council. Just in addition to Mayor Body, yesterday I participated in the International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women flag raising. So I just wanted to put a shout out to the Owensound Zonta Club. That's all, Mr. Warden.
Well, thanks for, for doing that, Council Leary, and that's an important recognition as well. Moving on then to the town of Meaford, starting off with Mayor Columbus.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, everyone. Finally, our library is open and we are so, so proud of all of the work and the folks who have contributed to that. It's been quite a journey and it is really quite spectacular. So we welcome everyone to come and visit and check it out. We have a number of things going on. Christmas for us will be very different as with everyone. Our traditional Santa Claus parade coming up on the 5th of December will be a little different. It will be a stationary parade at the arena this, this year, again sponsored by the Kinsman. Friday, December 4th, again, this is the weekend of our traditional window unveiling. And the windows will be judged on Friday and the tree lit on Saturday. And then the parade, stationary parade following that. Also, opening that weekend will be many craft shows within the downtown area at Craig Gallery and also on the main street. So there's, there's a lot of Christmas spirit beginning to happen. Also planned through the Chamber of Commerce is a driving tour of all of the Christmas lights that folks put up on there to, to create that festive feeling. And folks are asked to register with the Chamber of Commerce and a map will be produced then on December the 1st so that folks can have a look at what, what this community does to light up for Christmas. I know Deputy Mayor Council Keveney will talk about the Dragons, which is coming up as well. And I think, I think that's all. Oh, just one other thing is our Thursday flicks are back in here at Meaford Hall, Thursday evenings, 4 o'clock. You must pre-register, but there's some old and some goodies coming up on that. That's limited attendance, of course, but Meaford Hall is distanced within. So we can handle the, a crowd safely distance. So with that, I'll turn it over to Shirley for anything additional.
Thanks, Mayor Columbus and Council Keveney. Do you have lots to add?
Not lots for sure, Mr. Warden, but thank you and good morning, Noah. Mayor Columbus has covered really nicely what's happening in Meaford, just a couple of things. Yes, we touched on Dragon's Den and it's virtual this year, December the 2nd at 7:00 PM. And anyone can get a ticket at the meafordchamber.ca website. And there's still a chance to vote on the audience choice. Just one other thing to mention at our meeting on Monday, something I think that was quite exciting. We discussed rezoning for the former Gardner Wilson Funeral Home for potentially three new doctors coming to Meaford, which is really, really, as I say, exciting and important for us. And my only other thing is just to encourage everyone to please shop local this Christmas. So we hear it over and over and, and we know the big box stores are going to survive and we know how easy it is to shop online. But please do come out and support our small local businesses in any way that you can. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Keveney. That's so important that we do support our local businesses, especially during this time. Okay, moving on to Hanover and Council Mayor Patterson, good morning.
Thank you, Warden. Good morning, County Council. Things are running pretty smoothly in Hanover, although we are keeping a close eye on the confirmed case numbers. The Hanover Rotary and Lions Clubs, both clubs are working together to bring the 12 Days of Christmas scavenger hunt and Santa to Hanover on December 5th. After the scavenger hunt, kids can have their photo taken with Santa, who will be in our clock tower with all health protocols in place. And he will be behind the glass, so the kids can stand in front and have a photo taken with him. And then I just want to mention, our Chamber of Commerce has produced two wonderful videos titled, Fall Back in Love with Hanover. And if you have a chance, you can take a look and they're on the Chamber's Facebook. They're very good. Not that I'm biased, but thank you.
That's okay.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor Columbus and Council Hicks, Deputy Warden Hicks, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just want to echo the sentiments of Council Keveney on shopping local. I can tell you that my staff will be receiving local Hanover Chamber bucks so they can do their shopping in Hanover. That will be their gift. And as well, I want to, if Council Body has his copy of that wonderful 2021 calendar in support of the group, the Group of Seven calendar, I can't see him, but if he has it, show it. Because it really is a great gift and it goes to an excellent cause. So I've got some. I know that Council Body has got some. And if you're thinking about a, a great gift for someone in support of the gallery, then I think they're 20 bucks. Is that correct?
I see heads shaking, yes.
Right. That's it, Mr. Warden.
Okay, well, thank you, Deputy Warden and Council Hicks. Certainly very good to support that if you can.
And the body is doing a wonderful job of showing the calendar off there.
They called me bad.
There you are. There you go. Okay, well, thanks for that, Mayor Body. And next then, I'm going to go to Georgian Bluffs and Mayor Body, or Mayor Burley, Council Burley, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. We're still living the dream in Georgian Bluffs. We are finally able to get ourselves in the festive mood and get ready for Christmas. We had two very successful candidate contests for our new CEO and our Director of Operations, which we should soon be able to announce who they are. We had a very successful meeting of International Airport, a public meeting. Kudos to our staff. It's just amazing what they've done to have so many people to be able to comment online, because they did. Stay tuned. We will be going forward with our process and stay tuned and we look forward to that. And we'll go from there and I'll let Sue carry on there.
Thanks, Mayor Body or Burley, sorry. I, I, I do not mean to distinguish you different than your body, so I correct that. Sorry about that.
It's just a whistle thought on Mayor Body's side to be part of Georgian Bluffs.
I will move on. So, Council Carlton, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning to County Council. And I agree, we had a very successful meeting for the airport, public meeting, with 130 people registered and online for that meeting. So it was really well participated in. The other thing I'd like to comment on is our Georgian Bluff staff. And every year they do something special for Christmas. This year, they are all collecting funds that are, they are going to turn over to the breakfast clubs in the area. So kudos to our staff for how well they do with that. Thank you.
That's great. It's fantastic news. Okay, thank you for that. So moving on then to Chatsworth. In the center of the world.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Good morning, the council. The lights are on in Chatsworth, so they look wonderful. The, the tree at the center top is well lit. And I encourage anyone traveling south on Highway 6 and 10, just north of the junction, to have a, a good look at, at that Christmas tree. It's certainly something we're proud of. The Agriculture Society is having their stationary Christmas parade on the 19th. And that's from 10:30 until 12:30. Everyone's encouraged to put a float in and the theme is Christmas in Canada. Other than that, I don't think I have too much to report, so I'll turn it over back to you, Mr. Warden. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor Mackey. Council Mackey and Council Gamble, do you have anything to add?
I think Mr. Scott, there he said it all, just that at the parade, the Agriculture Society is sponsoring it and they will do, be doing a silent auction. That's, that's it.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And last but not least, Grey Highlands, and I'm going to go to my deputy, deputy mayor and Council Desai first.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. So we've got our Chamber of Commerce Santa Claus parade this year. It's a little bit of a twist, though. It's, it's not a parade. It's, it's a parade in the sense the floats aren't moving, you are. It's going to be held at the King Edward and Markel, I believe. And there will be opportunities for pictures with Santa after. A bit of a tongue-in-cheek comment, I don't know if the, the president of the Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Halliday, is going to be playing Santa. He well could if he put on some weight there. And in other news, the chamber also announced the winner of the Junior Citizen of the Year Award last night. And Ruben McCallum, who's a local realtor, won, won the award for his service with Rotorack Highlanders. We're very proud of, of the group and we're also very proud of Ruben. We're very proud of, of the group and we're also very proud of Ruben for, for his dedicated service to the community. We're going into our budget deliberations on Monday and it's something I'm looking forward to. It's my, it's my favorite time of the year. I, I love budgets. That's what I went to school for. And so, and the best part is December first, which is my birthday, we will be discussing budgets on that day. So it's, it's a win, win, wins for me. I don't know if the mayor or the warden has anything further to add.
Well, thank you, Deputy Mayor and Councilor Desai for those points. And we're, yeah, we should do a big shout out at the end of the day about your birthday coming up, so we'll keep that in mind. Just to add to that, in Gray Highlands, certainly our two builders, Sun, Sunfield, and definitely are continuing to take out building permits to continue the new development there, or it used to be the Stonebrook Development. And just as, just the other day, there is the expand, golf course lands to the north of Markdale has now been purchased by a developer similar to developer that's doing work in Meford and is certainly has a very aggressive plan to move forward in the new year with, with developing and making those amendments to bring that forward. So that's really exciting for Markdale and our water tower continues to grow. The crane's still in place and it's building higher and higher. So that's sort of exciting as you go through Markdale. And certainly lots, lots of things happening with the new food land and the new pet, pet value food store and the Dollarama. That's, take a drive to Markdale and parts of Gray Highlands, if you're looking for doing some local Christmas shopping. And at that, I'll end our good news and celebrations. And moving forward with the adjournment of County Council, I have it moved by Council Burley, second by Council Leary. Anybody opposed to that? Okay, that is carried.